We'll go and get started and Eldred will be right here, but we have folks online. We have our forum back. So we are back from the second session and Sean, I'll ask or I'll ask anyone, any modifications to the agenda? We're all set, right? We're all good? We're all good? All right. So, so if not, then we can go right into public comment period. And I believe I'm looking at a fairly empty auditorium. So it sounds like, well, it appears to these eyes that we have folks online that wish to address the board and the community. So, Mauro, go ahead.
Yes, we have four people who have signed up with the board clerk and they are all speaking online. So the first is Mitchell Bauer.
So they are looking for Mr. Bauer. It is, it is seven or so, which is our normal start time. Restart them. And if Mitchell's not right there, we can always come back. Next up.
Next is Karina Lockenhoff.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thanks for taking my comments. I'm Karina Lockenhoff and a parent of an elementary and a middle schooler. I'm also a researcher and I study people's emotional responses to health information. So I know how scary it can be to face a seemingly endless public health emergency. And I know how tempting it can be to believe in false news that are spread by social media. False news that tell us that vaccines are dangerous and that masks don't work and that COVID-19 is just a bad cold. So we should all go get over it and go back to normal, whatever normal may be. Those false beliefs are tempting, but the science is clear. Even though COVID-19 poses a higher risk to older people, children can get it, they can spread it, they can get very, very sick from it and even die. In fact, the rates of adverse long-term outcomes from COVID are not that different from polio, which threatened our communities in the 1950s and 60s. The polio epidemic ended because there was a vaccine. And thankfully, there are now vaccines for COVID. These vaccines are thoroughly tested, safe and effective, and they're finally available for teens. I thank the Ithaca City School District for partnering with Tompkins County Health to host vaccine clinics which make the vaccines available to all the students and families who want them. Sadly, children under 12 can't get the vaccine yet, so we need to keep them safe in other ways. Again, the science is clear. COVID spreads through droplets in the air and wearing masks prevents those droplets from forming. This means that wearing masks protects those around us. My child's mask protects your child, your child's mask protects mine. I thank the Ithaca City School District for following the CDC guidelines requiring all students and teachers to continue wearing masks indoors. I know that this policy is supported by the vast majority of families in our district. How do I know? Well, my daily walks take me past one of the elementary schools and even though masks are no longer required outdoors, I see that most children are still wearing them. So children and their parents know that masks keep them safe. To wrap things up, I would like to again thank the district for sticking to the science and taking a careful measured approach that keeps our children and our community safe. Yes, there will always be some misinformed voices asking you to speed things up and to pretend the pandemic is over. They may be a vocal minority, but they do not represent our community at large, which supports and thanks you for your commitment to sound science. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Denise, Denise Garra.
Could you unmute my camera too, please? Can you hear me?
They're working on it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're called.
Okay, okay. Yep. Thank you so much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am shaken to the core by listening to the statistics. Fifty-three percent of the girls in high school reporting sexual harassment at the last meeting. It is troubling and disturbing and it is sad. And two other high school girls hinting racial discrimination or taunting at this school district is also disturbing and troubling. Safety of the students do come first. It is sad to see any child living in fear, not in this day and age. It is troubling. And I want to share, I want to share one more troubling number that I could not show it to you last time because I ran out of time. If you can look at the number there, the Boynton Middle School, nineteen percent of the students are passing the eighth grade New York State's math assessment. And I'll do a very quick thought experiment to prove my point. Do any of you remember from the last meeting, what was the average class size at Enfield? How many principals of the 12 in this district were labeled inexperienced by New York State Education Department? And how many kids were passing the fifth grade math at Enfield? If experienced people like yourself would not be able to remember, cannot remember a single number, how do you expect eight to 11-year-old kids to remember any number from the class if they don't practice at home? The purpose of this thought experiment is not to embarrass you guys, but want to make a critical point on career destroying no homework policy at the elementary schools. If they, I mean, if they are five years, they're going to be five years behind from their counterparts in other states who are doing their homework now and going and doing, going above and beyond what is needed, then the only job left for the kids at the ICSD district would be the minimum wage, diminial jobs. And mind you, this is none of the children's fault. It is all because of the faulty vision of the leadership at ICSD. Please wake up and save the livelihood and future dreams of children of Ithaca community. And please do not sell them short on their talents and capabilities. Thank you.
And next we have Elizabeth Quadrozzi.
Very good. So Liz is not there. Okay.
And what about Mitchell Bauer?
Okay, very good. So board responses to anything we wish we respond to.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on points about state assessments and particularly math assessments from a macro level as someone who has looked at, well, high school performance of students across the country in all 50 states and needs to do that as part of my job. New York State basically has the highest and most complex assessment standards of any state in the United States and the vast majority of our states are no longer testing students in most subjects or any subjects. So, and I'm trying to remember when it was that New York State instituted the much more rigorous assessments and then raised the passing level. And that was certainly within the last 10 years or so. That was part of our governor's early attempts to show how bad our schools were, raising the passing rate from 65 to 80% and saying, look at all the kids who failed. So I don't think that no one wants to see students not doing well. And certainly, this district has in recent years, the teachers in this district have put enormous amounts of time and effort into trying to improve particularly the math curriculum to make it stronger for every student. It is a work in progress. We certainly haven't given up. It is not the case that we don't know or we don't care that not everyone is thriving in math. That is something that we've paid a lot of attention to over the past few years, and it's something that will continue to be a priority for this board and this district. But part of this is as a result of differing assessments across different states and the fact that some states assess and some don't. So I just want to have that information out there to the public.
Other comments? And I'm not hearing anything right now, but we'll, if I want to address Dr. Nash, there was a question and there's some more, correct? In your, in your comments, since I grew up in Enfield and grew up on a dairy farm in Enfield and since my son is a product of Enfield Elementary School and had a very good experience out there. I believe you asked if we could recall the average class size that you referenced in your presentation at our last meeting, the average class size, if I am not mistaken, seven, if that makes any difference. But I will say that the leadership at Enfield Elementary is outstanding. Some of our best leaders are in that school. We provide any and all resources that Enfield needs, along with any and all resources that every single elementary school in this district needs, along with Boynton, DuWitt, LACS, and certainly at the high school. So we'll leave it at that as far as my comments tonight. And again, we are one of the best public school districts in the country, and I will not back away from that. And with what, with some of the most outstanding leadership in the country. And so, yes, we, we do not allow children to be left at the, at the side and bypassed. And we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that every child in this community has not only a sound, basic education, but an outstanding Ithaca education. Any other comments? If I'm not hearing any, we'll go on to student reps. If they are there.
Hi. I would actually also like to sort of respond to the point made about middle school math. I could be entirely mistaken, but I believe that the reason that the numbers for the eighth grade New York State math tests are very low is because of the offering of Algebra One for eighth graders at the middle school. That means that a very large portion and perhaps the more advanced portion of the grade is not taking the eighth grade New York State math test. Therefore, radically changing the, the range of abilities of the kids working the test in comparison to, say, sixth grade, seventh grade, where we saw the numbers were much higher. I do agree that preparation for higher math in middle school is not up to par. However, taking that number at face value, I don't think is entirely helpful. I will also say to the board that I believe it was a mistake to remove the accelerated math system from middle schools and to make Algebra One harder to take for eighth graders. I believe that the effect of that and especially with how it is being reintroduced as an extracurricular of sorts will make higher math and advanced math more inaccessible to students and will result in increasingly segregated classes, not more inclusion. So, yeah.
So for many students, the end of the year is all but here. Many sports have ended at this point and many clubs have as well. At this point, all that remains is testing and a few end of year events. The senior class recently held their casino night to great success and will have their mixer in a few days on the 12th. And the senior class will be graduating as well next week in four different groups. Personally pretty excited for that. And although the junior class is not able to have a junior prom this year, a capture the flag event will be held at IHSS on June 15. We are also holding a small socially distanced picnic between the international club and the reps of the board as a way to wrap up the year and see each other in person. So we're definitely looking forward to that as well.
Can you hear me? We would like to follow up from the of sexual harassment and assault at ICSD during the last board meet. And we really appreciate who was the Title IX Coordinator, reached out to discuss students' experiences and ways to create a safer environment with us. Before our discussion, I sent out another Google form to IHSS students to ask for their input on ways ICSD can prevent sexual harassment and if they have ever experienced sexual harassment. They have included some of the descriptions and the responses were heart-wrenching and powerful and inspired us all to work harder in order to combat sexual harassment and assault at school. If you would like to see these responses yourself, please feel free to contact us. With these insightful responses, Lynn and Lynn Stack from the Advocacy Center and Ms. Coyle, the head counselor, we were able to develop preliminary solutions and steps ICSD can take to create a community of learning without dangers of sexual harassment and assault. A measure that is already happening is putting up resource posters of district resources for sexual harassment at school. This may seem like a basic step, but according to our surveys and polls, it is shocking to see how little this type of important information is known at school. Other solutions were to create a form to safely report sexual harassment, staff training, and a clear system for proper accountability and restorative justice for perpetrators. We are looking forward to ICSD following through with their plans to create a safe and welcoming education environment for all.
Excellent. Hi, board responses.
Grace, I, I would appreciate actually seeing the results of the survey and the survey itself and statistics on the number of responses and who responded. And maybe instead of each of us reaching out to you individually, you could send that to our board clerk, Trisha Beresford, who could then distribute that to us. It would be extremely helpful.
Elizabeth.
I have one, one, Mr. I agree. It'd be really great to see that data. I just want to say a general question, a general statement, though, just how much I've appreciated the student reps this year, how you brought so many significant issues to the center for. So really, just thank you for that because I think it's important to really get your voice and it's meant a lot to me anyway, to hear it, especially during such a complex year that we've all, that everybody has been through. So thank you.
Just want to add, Grace, we are aware as board members, or at least some of us, because we pay attention to national news, that in some districts around the country, these instances of sexual harassment and abuse are, they're rampant. It's so extraordinary. It just makes your head spin. Makes you think, how often does it happen? And in all probability, it happened because in the early phases, people were alerted to the fact that this was an issue and either ignored it, downplayed it, or just couldn't come up with the right solutions until it was national news. So we hear you. As a board, you know, we have one employee or two employees, including the clerk. So our superintendent knows that we hear you around this topic. Certainly don't want to be one of those districts that wakes up one day and says, how in the hell did this happen? How did we get it? So forward that data along and he'll give us a starting point to really dive into it and have some of these tough conversations. But as always, thank you for your input and just want to piggyback on that. And thanks for, all you guys have contributed to our capacity to see what's happening in the school this way. Thank you.
Hi, Grace. This is Chris Malcolm. Thank you for sharing everything and to echo Pat what Pat shared, please send that information to Tricia, the board clerk, so she could share it for it. And I also want to thank you for the collaborative effort you put forth and not just pointing out that this is an alarming issue, but you know, how to make change and implement things moving forward is extremely important. I, last meeting, we didn't have a chance to follow up and you shared some concerns you had with the students of color gathering that happened. And I just was curious because I don't feel comfortable speaking for the students of color, but were you, did you possibly reach out to the team that put it together and have any dialogue?
I guess like they tried to include as many people as possible on their planning committee, but I guess I didn't really feel comfortable pointing that out because a majority of the people planning were of that certain race. And I didn't want to like offend anyone who is like planning this like really nice event for the students. So I guess it was just something that students felt as a whole, but this may be next time it could be a little bit different.
Other comments? Anyone?
I guess I'll go.
A little more.
First, I want to thank Karina for reminding us of the science about the dangers of COVID. And I appreciate her appreciation for what we've been doing to try to mitigate the dangers. I'm very grateful that after some confusing communications from the state level, which implied that they were going to remove the statewide mask mandate for both outside and inside, that they finally on Monday said that they were going to do what we had already decided to do, which to maintain the mandate for mask wearing inside. But it's nice to hear us be appreciated, but also I think Karina's being able to just remind us very, very clearly about the realities of COVID. About the changes that have been implemented over the last couple of years in middle school math, I just want to remind people that these changes were initiated and enthusiastically led and monitored by math teachers, secondary math teachers at both the middle school and the high school. This was their initiative. It continues to be. Their expertise, their research convinced them passionately that these were changes that were for the benefit of all students.
And if I could just follow up on that, I would like to thank Adam for reminding us all that the eighth, the eighth grade tests, math tests are indicative of the students in eighth grade who did not go into Algebra One. And those numbers, those low numbers have been around for years. And that was, that was one of the pieces of evidence that was shown to the board in order to underscore the necessity of revamping the math curriculum. And that is, that is a detail that I had forgotten. And Adam, you brought it up very nicely and concisely. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any, any other comments? We're good. I will only add, just off topic, I did have the pleasure and privilege to stop by last Wednesday in this room for the first live performance by Chamber Ensembles for the Ithaca Band, first time in basically 14 months or, or longer, that they had actually played in front of an audience. And Daphne gave me a heads up and I was able to slide in. It was just a taste of things to come. There were a few tears, I believe, but the opportunity to do that again. And I think we'll have a few more opportunities perhaps to hear some performances this spring. But we look forward to next fall, Dr. Brown, when we're back full in person. We are playing sports. Football starts when football is supposed to start and band orchestra and the choral groups are able to be on the stage rather than us. I do not foresee us being on the stage come fall because this is not our normal spot. And so we, we should be in a different room and hopefully without masks on and but able to still communicate and be in front of the public. But we appreciate, well, this hybrid meeting format for a few more meetings, Dr. Brown. But when the kids can use this stage rather than, than us use this stage, that will be a, a happy day for this Board of Education, I assure you. So, but outstanding opportunity just to hear the kids play again, play together again. And there's a lot of talent in this district, Dr. Brown, as you well, as you well know. And so if there's no other comments, we're going to roll the consent agenda and then roll on to, Bell Sherman's here and we want to hear from Jeff Kamasek and other stuff. So we good? Everyone?
I would just add, sorry, I just want to reply to, I just want to respond to Grace's comment. And I'm thinking as we think about the evolution and progression of the Student of Color Summit, that there'll be a space created where students can get together to talk about what it means to be a person of color and what those experiences are because it's not a monolithic group. Not all folks who are, not, not everyone identifies as a person of color, especially, especially if we're talking about the Asian diaspora. So I think it's, it's a bigger discussion, bigger, we need to be creating spaces where people can talk about their experiences and talk about what it means to be inclusive and to belong and how our students can see these opportunities as spaces for them to be in leadership positions or to learn. So I'm hoping, Grace, that next year, there will be a space carved out at the beginning where you're able to feel comfortable to speak your own personal truth and talk about the direction and the way in which you hope to see the summit grow as we think about our student of color population.
Thanks for the call. Appreciate that. Anything else? Sean, good? All right. So let's go on to consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mauro. Chris, there was, there was something added. It's the, there is a contract in here for a few things, but anything else, anything that we need to address?
No, just the 6.2, the resolution for fiberware renewal with OCM BOSI's. We actually discussed this within finance, but it just got, the contract just moved up for this voting session.
Okay, good. All right, good. So any, I think we're probably okay. So not, everyone has an opportunity to speak, but speak now because we're moved seconded and Tricia, go ahead.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Croyle.
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell.
Yes.
Eldred Harris.
Yes.
Nicole Afave.
Yes.
Maure Lane.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Anne Reichler. Anne Reichlin.
Yes.
Patricia Wazin.
Yes.
Next round. Alright, thank you for the opportunity to introduce me. Uh, many of my update items have been already referenced or referred to by a well-informed and engaged board. So I only have one additional item and that is to share that we will be posting the recording of the most recent commendation ceremony. Um, today we held our, I don't know what commendation ceremony, we've had many commendations over the years, but this was our June edition. And it was virtual and we recognized hundreds of young people and adults in our school community for their achievements. So we will be posting that. One of those achievements is the um, the publishing and the posting of a Black Lives Matter at Schools mural, which one can find on the wall right behind me. So I'll encourage our folks and invite our community to drive by, walk by, and take a QR reader to learn more about the project and access the amazing artwork that has been produced by our young people um in support of the beautiful humanity that exists in our schools. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. Do you want to um, want to talk about uh Bell Sherman and introduce what's next?
Oh yeah, I'm going to invite Mr. Tomasic and Ms. Talke and Ms. Grover up to the microphone and they will provide even a better introduction than I could provide, but they're here to talk about some of our cool work. No, no, Ms. Talke. Ms. Talke is going to step back here. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. So I am Mary Grover. I have the privilege of serving as your inclusion officer and get to sit here this evening with Mr. Tomasic, Principal of Bell Sherman. So we want to start by framing this around the Learning Forward Initiative, which is our, our plan um to design schools that are built on love, joy, and a commitment to justice and anti-racism in our school district. And so Learning Forward ICSD is a group of educators and students meeting weekly to look at four quadrants, if four themes, as we plan for the fall 2021 and beyond. So I'll just begin with this quote from Dr. Bettina Love that opens every one of our sessions. "To love all children, we must struggle together to create the schools. We were taught to believe impossible. Schools built on justice, love, and anti-racism." So you'll see in these four quadrants, engaging with students as partners and leaders, the educator identity work that continues, who are we, how our identities intersect? And how is that informing how we teach and how we are validating and affirming students in front of us? The anti-racist curriculum for all. As we grow, our commitment to anti-marginalization curriculum. How are we, are we grounding that in the work of Dr. Goldie Muhammad and her five pursuits, joy, criticality, intellectualism, identity, and, and skills? Thank you. So of course, I get, I have the privilege of working uh with Lily Talke and facilitating these conversations and hearing, learning from our educators and students. Um, the last, the last quadrant is structures of support. So what does integrated social emotional learning in mental health look like? As we're having these conversations, what, what are we doing right now and what do we wish to grow? So Principal Tomasic, I will pass to you as, as far as the structures of support and what's happening at Bell Sherman.
Alright, well, uh I'd just like to thank everyone for inviting us this evening. Uh, we're going to provide you with uh several, I, I hope, I consider powerful examples of uh Learning Forward in Action at Bell Sherman. And uh I'm really happy that um even though I'm the only one here in person right now, I have two uh amazing anti-racist Bell Sherman educators joining me online this evening. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to them in uh just a second. Uh, and that's uh Alex Share, our awesome social worker, and Ms. Shannon Fryer, uh a fourth grade teacher who's doing some amazing things uh in her classroom. And what they're going to uh talk a little about, a little bit about is a, a, a social emotional structure of support that's a bit outside the box. Um, it's something that takes place all outside. It's something that was really uh created uh with students every step of the way. Uh, and I'm just going to uh turn the floor over to them because they're going to be much more eloquent than me and you're going to learn about our new mindfulness path that we're uh creating at Bell Sherman.
Well, thanks everyone for having me. My name is Alex Share and I'm the social worker at Bell Sherman. Can you see me and, and the mindfulness path picture at the same time or just here? Okay, I'll just, I'll just keep talking.
We're working on it.
No worries. Alright, well, while you're working on it, I'll just share a little overview of like the kind of like why, why we thought this would be a great project this year. And we think of this mindfulness path as a culturally responsive, social emotional learning that also promotes public health during a pandemic. And so Shannon's going to talk a little bit more, but we've created an outdoor mindfulness path with four different stations for students to utilize to get in touch with their feelings and to use de-escalation or calming and mindfulness strategies if they're feeling things that are unpleasant. And we've correlated with the ruler framework that we've been using as our anchor social emotional learning at the school. Um, and we thought it was specifically important this year to kind of combine the mental health and public health um perspectives because in a pandemic, mental health needs are higher. And the idea for students to be outside as much as possible, we thought was really important from a public health perspective. Um, the, from an inclusion perspective, this is a mindfulness path that can be used by one student who needs a break to go outside and feel better or to get in touch with their feelings. It can be used by a whole classroom for social emotional workshops and lessons. It can also be used for a whole school-wide or a grade-wide mindfulness day. So the, it can be used kind of like very tier one RTI support in it from a CLR perspective. Oh, I just have to turn on my camera. Wow, look at that. Okay, that's fine. Um, and from a culturally, linguistically responsive perspective, it really highlights the learning styles of kinesthetic learners, socio-centric learners, connected learners, authentic learners. So it really kind of goes back to Dr. Holly's need for a variety of different interventions for a variety of different learners. Um, and from an equity, equity perspective, I really feel as a social worker that any tier one social emotional learning that's inclusive is beneficial to all students, specifically students of color who are problematically overclassified for suspension, overclassified for special education needs around emotional needs. And so if we can do more inclusive-based work for all students, it supports all of our learners and specifically students who have been oppressed and overclassified by our systems. So we've had great partners with this. We've had IPI, a connecting classroom grant through IPI, which has been really helpful for fundings and a little bit of extra funding from our own PTA, which has been awesome. We've partnered with Ifka Children's Garden, who's done a lot of consulting and onsite support for designs about what we, how our construction should be, what our sign should look like. We've had amazing support and help from Wendy Kensonberg, our Bell Sherman parent who's done our graphic design. And we've sourced most of our work and materials from local companies. So I will turn it over to Shannon to talk a little bit more about the project itself.
Awesome. Thank you, Alex, and thank you all for having me here. Um, yeah, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts of what my class actually did. Um, as you know, we began this year virtually online, which um presented its challenges, but also presented this really unique opportunity for us to practice mindfulness in our own homes and in our own environments. And the students really were able to engage fully in doing that. And so we've uh began with weekly lessons, weekly ruler lessons with Alex as well as his social worker intern Jess, who is amazing. And each of those lessons began with a mood meter check-in. So students were able to kind of see how they were feeling. And um, oh, sorry. There we go. Okay, can you see me now? And so after they checked in based on their needs, we either did a movement or a meditation, um dependent on how they were feeling. And so that really led us to the first sign, the initial creation of the first sign, which was the guided meditation. The students wrote their own guided meditation, which you'll see there in the third slide there. And based on that guided meditation, they kind of figured out the layout. And so then they moved on to the second sign, which was a movement sign. And they did a couple of different directions on um yoga positions and stretching. And then we moved on to the um initial sign, which was the feeling sign. So based on just how we had been doing it, the students felt like people should have a way of checking in with how they were feeling. So they created their own mood meter. And then um at the end of our mindfulness path, we created a reflection sign. And based on um moving through the path, students wanted participants to be able to feel, um to reflect on how they were feeling. And so at the bottom of the sign, there will be a box of rocks and participants will be able to put their rock inside the colored bucket based on how they're feeling. And then, of course, to just wrap all of that up, we created a welcome sign to um kind of talk about the history of this project, a little bit about our partners, and then our um definition of what it means to be mindful. Um, and actually, we installed, um most of these pictures you see here are from today. Um, so we were out there installing and we have one more trail build. And the students are really just excited to have um a more peaceful and calming environment at school and for um people in the community to have ways of practicing being mindful. So thanks again for letting me share this amazing project and I will turn it back over to Jeff.
Thank you, Shannon and Alex. And if you can uh stick around, there may or may not be a, a time for a Q and A at the end. And that would be awesome if you could stick around for just a, a minute. Um, Tricia, if you could go to the next slide, that would be awesome. The other thing um we wanted to highlight is um, I'm really proud of the work our, our school's done around this, uh around this project. So right after um, um the presidential inauguration, like a, a bunch of teachers were just so pumped up uh after seeing Amanda Gorman read her poem and, and just the, the inauguration as a, as a whole. Um, so I want to give a shout out to Jen Jones, who was really a first grade teacher, and this was really her idea. Sarah Locke, our art teacher, who jumped on board to help create this uh really cool mural. And our admin intern Kristen Devita, who did a lot of the uh technical parts and organizing of this project. Uh, but basically, um, I mean, uh, I'm sure everyone on, on the board and everyone watching at home is quite familiar with Amanda Gorman's inaugural poem, The Hill We Climb. Uh, and um staff at our school thought it was just a really good example of black excellence, black joy, and we thought it was really, really important for all of our kids to make sure they got to experience black excellence and black joy. Um, so after watching that, and again, we got pre-K to five, like every teacher jumped on board, um which I'm very, very thankful for, but really not surprised. That's how we roll at Bell Sherman. And so after um uh studying her life, you know, watching the poem a few times, learning about um her background, um each class uh was basically assigned like a short stanza or a couple of lines of poetry. And then Sarah, the art teacher, uh worked with each class um like talking about like, you know, those, those words, how do they make you feel? So how do you feel? And what images come to your mind? Over a, a several art classes, each kid created their own individual uh artwork based on that poem. And as you can see, Sarah and the kids decided to uh have that expressed in rainbow colors in each grade level uh in the mural, is each color is a different grade level. Uh concurrently, uh the class has also worked on, how do we act out this poem? And um, and Ms. Gorman uh set the bar pretty darn high, so uh kids had their work cut out for them. Um, but um they, you know, so they, you know, figure out, how do we show this with our voices, with our bodies? And should we do it all as um a class in unison or should we chop it up and everyone do a, a couple of words? Uh, and as you'll see in just a second, you'll see uh many different examples. Um, and the other thing that was very, very important, why, one of the reasons we chose this uh project was um, we really wanted something inclusive of, of every kid in the whole school, whether they were learning online and in person. So we used uh digital tools to create the mural and digital tools to create the video, which now you're going to see a snippet of. It's a little bit longer than like a normal video you might see at the board meeting, but I promise it's not too long. Uh, it's less than four minutes, so let's roll. So this is the kids doing the hill we climb. So Tricia, if you go back to that last slide, it should be hyperlink on the top there.
We like movies, Jeff. We're good. Yeah.
And yet the dawn is hours before we do it. Somehow we do it. Somehow we weather and witness. Be sure that it's appropriate, but certainly have been. We use expensive, go a factory and a fire in the city that we live. Send it from Slade is gonna lead us to the market. Rainbow we go in first with it. And so we lift our gazes. Not what stands between us, but what stands before us. You push that more. And we know. So what the future is. We know what a different thing is for us. Today down among us. So we can reach out our arms. To what I know. We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our action and inertia will be when here comes up the next generation. Our love of the um third generation is certain. It's our presence, the night, it's my white light. Then the, it comes out of lightness. To change our children's birthright. The last leave beyond the country. And I've been the one you are left with. Every breath from my bronze pounded chest, we will raise this wounded world into a wondrous one. We will rise from the gold wind hills of the west. We will rise from the windswept northeast. We are a forefathers first realized revolution. And then we know who we are. Except and we're not all in our country. Our evil riders and beautiful, we will be there. That will be beautiful. And then we will be set out on the shade of bright. And I will pray the beautiful blue that we create for their holy life. If only we were brave enough to see it. If only we were brave enough to be it.
Thank you, Tricia. Yeah, so that's it. Um, we've got a lot more work to do. I'm super excited to be at Bell Sherman. Uh, almost one year down, uh many more to go. And I'm just uh really pumped up to continue our anti-racist work. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions and I think Alex and Shannon are also on if you have any.
Questions for Jeff. And Alex and Shannon. Anne, please.
Anne, please. Go ahead, Anne.
Just to make a couple comments, that was fantastic. I was, that is really, I loved it. And there are so many levels. And I think that it was really, it was an inspired product. And among the things that it shows is the transformative opportunities for, for the arts to kind of and to kind of bring an entire community together, both for its meaning, but all the amazing ways the kids were able to interpret it and internalize it and express it and kind of, I hope you can send it. Yeah, I hope you can send it far and wide. That was really beautiful. Thanks.
High praise from an artist.
Also, I'll tell you that this is the kind of stuff I loved doing when I was a secondary English teacher for 35 years and I collaborated with our art teachers and our drama teachers and and worked on projects that included, you know, the literary arts, the visual arts, the dramatic arts. And I would love to I love knowing that kids are experiencing this, experiencing this kind of collaboration and integration of arts from pre-K on.
There's more. Questions from the cheap seats at home?
How'd you know I was sitting in my cheap chair, Rob? I just want to really thank you folks for the timeliness of this, you know, and also giving the, the children a voice at a time where, you know, being isolated or being separated makes you feel like you're silent. And that's definitely recognizable for, by me. So thank you very much.
Rob, I don't have a seat. I stand. It's a standing desk, but we'll get there. I'm appreciative of the ability to merge in person and at-home students, right? That's, so that was fantastic. I'm wondering from either Alex or Shannon, thank you, what, what was your takeaway from this mindfulness experience with our students?
I can speak for my reflection on it. I think it was just really cool to watch the students take a draft of an idea and really watch it become a reality. With working with our graphic designer, we were back and forth with edits pretty much every week, especially towards the, the middle of finalizing those signs. And it was really cool for them to finally be able to hold the physical sign at the end. And just the experience of watching them actually engage in mindfulness. Even as I was saying, the virtual, it's a lot easier to do mindfulness in your own home and your own environment when you're not around your peers. And so we had that opportunity, but then they were able to bring it to school. And even just as we continued doing them weekly, it was really awesome to watch them really invest in doing a meditation and get to see the energy of the entire space change. So that was really powerful for me.
And I'll say similarly, I think this project really spoke to me about the resilience of children, especially during a pandemic where I've seen that on so many levels at school this year, but seeing it in this class that they've been able to create such an extensive project during a time that has been challenging and watching them become more aware of their own emotions and feelings. Like we would go in and say like, do you all want to do a movement? Break or meditation? They'd be like, oh, we need meditation. We're just moving. Or they say, we've been sitting for a while. We need movement. Like they would, they would be thinking about this and they would have, like, seeing their emotional intelligence expand and increase during this project was a real highlight for me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'll keep that, I'm going to borrow that emotion or a meditation break. I'm going to start using that one, Alex. Thank you.
I have to say, again, that was pretty incredible, guys. Thank you for the presentation and the work. And Jeff for leading it in year one in this weird circumstance. Reflecting on my life as someone who's pretty well-educated. I was a full-fledged adult before I realized that Asians and African-Americans had collaborated on freedom activities back in the sixties, right? I was an adult before I realized that so many white people were on the freedom rides risking life and death and being burnt during the civil rights movement. To see these babies virtually come to this information organically by engaging with each other and learning about each other. It makes all of us really hopeful that when they are faced with the annuity of some of the racism, they will see, they will inherently say, I'm confused. What is it? I learned in first grade, this is no. Like so many things we do here in Ithaca, you know, we try to learn from districts around us, but we often find ourselves in a leadership position. I'm just going to go in tonight and pray that this spreads like wildfire.
Thank you.
I see. Any other questions? For Jeff and others? Glad I have my top on. Okay. Not hearing anything. Jeff, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you go home because school's not over yet. So but congratulations on, well, an outstanding first year at Bell Sherman, which I, Jeff, I kind of forgot, but well, others had outstanding first years at Boynton in your stead. So it's, it was really a great great team effort. So we appreciate it. And so thanks, Steph. Thanks, Mary. Thanks. Thanks everyone. Thanks, everyone. The whole staff and students at Bell Sherman. Outstanding work.
Thank you for having me, everyone. Thank you for having us. Great job, Alex and Shannon. And we'll see you back at 7:40.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Speaking of outstanding performances, the safety plan is back on my, on the agenda. Oh, sorry. Dr. Brown, you have to segue these things. And now Dan, we're, you know, this is just an executive summary letter. It's not, the whole safety plan is not here in front of us, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's right. Out of our district safety committee, we decided we'd put together a one pager that would go out to district administrators. It would highlight a lot of the changes that we, we made back in January. But we know this was also a great opportunity to, to share this information in a succinct way. And how we reimagine the plan, how it's an opportunity for an anti-racist, an anti-oppressive safety. So some of the highlights are, when should we call law enforcement? And just, you know, just wanted to share this with district administrators. We wanted to share a process and a structure and some guidance and course for when to do this. First step would be contacting the superintendent or the deputy superintendent. And of course, if there was no imminent danger or harm, you know, we direct, you know, we'd want the, to contact family, caregivers, maybe mental health support. And then after contacting the superintendent or the deputy, of course, you can contact law enforcement in times of danger. Or protecting yourself and others. We want to provide some examples of when to call 911, of course, active shooter events, intruders on campus, medical emergencies, of course. We also want to have a very proactive approach and supports for students who are elopement risks, flight risks due to a variety of mental health factors. And that calling 911 in those cases should really only be used for imminent safety issues and really as a last resort. We also added, we got some feedback to also add, making sure to communicate to parents and caregivers before these drills occur, 48 hours ahead of time. And we know that would help support social and emotional support of our students with proper planning. We added some information about how long the lockdown drills may, may be. They could be from 15 to 40 minutes. Of course, the administration, the administrators need to account for everybody in these drills before they release everyone. And of course, we added, it was approved in January, but we wanted to follow up about during COVID, social distancing and masks obviously need to be required in the lockdown, a staggered schedule, which really means that classes can do it one at a time. It didn't have to be the whole campus. And hiding and sheltering, it's not, it's not needed. An overview can be provided to the class. And we also, you know, wanted to affirm that there be no live action drills. And then recently, something that came up was in a, in a lockdown drill, what do you do if you have virtual students participating? Just came up very recently with a teacher I was working with in the school. And that if, if students are participating virtually, you know, they should mute themselves so that it's quiet, quiet drill. And and they should turn their cameras off to reduce any distractions. Of course, switching phones off to silence or vibrate and obviously notifying them when it has been completed. Another thing that came up was telling everyone that it is a drill. And, and, and saying that on the announcements, but also saying that at the end to reassure. So just wanted to share this one pager with the board and happy to answer any questions, too.
Dan, I assume the policy committee has gone through this, correct?
Yeah, we, on two separate occasions, we've gone through this and I've made a lot of the updates and I really appreciate the feedback.
Outstanding policy.
It was, it was an amazing policy.
So just for
Comments were inserted.
Apostrophes or semicolon. Everything, yeah, was added.
Can I ask you one question about sequence of things?
Sure.
Under when to call law enforcement, it's a really important question. I'm, I'm presuming that it was an absolute emergency, somebody could just call.
Yeah.
Right. But the way it's written, it, it, it seems like, oh, wait, I need to call the building principal. I need to call the administrator first. So I just, I just, for me, that it's still a little confusing for me in terms of the
Sure.
where it comes in the sequence.
Maybe we can put it at the top instead of the bottom, that in a real emergency, of course, call 911.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be helpful.
Right. So they're not like thinking, oh, wait.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. And that's, that's my thinking.
I'd be happy to make that change. No problem.
Yeah, Anne, I think we can clarify that language. I feel it's important for us to realize that in the previous district safety plan, the very first thing that was listed was to call 911. And so there was no guidance. It was no matter what was taking place, we're going to contact law enforcement. And what we were trying to do is identify, yes, there are of course times in which we have to contact law enforcement. But that should not be our first response. That there may be other ways in which to engage with young people. There are situations that may not need or necessitate us contacting our local law enforcement. So we can continue to clarify that language, Anne. I appreciate that. And I think we should. But I just thought it'd be important for the community and for other board members to know that was the reason for providing a little bit more clarity that we should, there are times which we may not need to contact law enforcement. And the way in which the previous safety plan was written, there was no distinction between when we should and when we should not.
So maybe one way to put it, like unless it is a true emergency or a life-threatening emergency, please follow the steps or something like that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I can include that. Thanks.
And well, Sean, well, you're, Sean, you're there, Dan, you're here. This is not a policy per se, but it is a executive summary with some of the highlights. Are we, well, this is up for discussion. Do we vote on this ever? Or it's just going to be your edits are made, eventually we'll go out there.
Yeah, I, you know, the, the safety plan is a huge document.
No, exactly.
Yeah. So I just wanted to highlight some of the changes that happened. I don't believe you need to vote on it. It was just to, to get out to administrators and maybe other staff to let them know that some of the, some of the highlights. And a lot of it's still pertinent to next year. I mean, I'm sure some teachers had questions about how virtual students would participate in lockdown and this, this could help with that.
I have one question. When, when you, when you ask, sorry, you're, you're saying that unless it's like an imminent, like an emergency, you call 911. But then I see the elopement risk and I'm thinking of kids with IEPs or 504s where there might be explicit instructions on how to handle a certain situation. But also perhaps it should be suggested to those CSET members to have those instructions in there. Because I know a number of our students utilize Project Lifesaver, which if there's an elopement risk, they would be calling the sheriff's department to activate Project Lifesaver, but there also might be other reasons too. So rather than just 911, I think we need to also perhaps add the IEP 504 contingent to this.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm happy to, to make those additions. And I also added this because from a suggestion from one of our community members that we don't, you know, in an elopement, a student who has an IP or 504, we don't want to call 911. We want to follow the IP. We want to follow the 504. But I'm happy to add that specific language in there. And that, that's an excellent point. Thanks.
Aaron, I think that's a great point. The reason why there's a a district safety plan committee to try to bring all these various perspectives, right? And, and all these different scenarios. And so it's trying to capture that. There are other times in which, again, two kids are arguing and next thing you know, you know, you see it at least, it doesn't happen here, though it has happened, that, you know, we may call the police on an elementary school student just because they're having a bad day. And that is what we're trying to avoid. But yes, if it's in a 504, right, explicitly stated, we need to contact the sheriff's department. I think those things that we can add. Rob, to your question, we do not vote on it when these changes are made. At the beginning of the school year, there is usually, and Dan, you I apologize that I don't know. You may know better than me. I don't know if it's every year, every two years, we're expected to have a public hearing on our district safety plan. And so that will be coming up sometime, I believe, this, this fall in terms of the changes that are, the changes that we have made now will be keeping, there'll be an opportunity for the public to be able to speak about as well. Just to, so there's no vote asked this evening.
Yeah, and that's right, Sean. We'll, we'll be revisiting, we'll, we will revisit this in October. So there'll be another time for, to incorporate all these comments into the greater safety.
And then just to be clear, we do need to adopt the safety plan every year, correct?
Yeah.
Right. It's not like, oh, hey, we, we have one and we're not going to touch it much. So we're okay. We, we have to have on the agenda a board vote adopting the safety plan because it's constantly being updated or edited or complete overhaul is certainly that we've certainly pushed over the last few years, really taking a big, hard look at, our long, hard look, sir. So are we good, Sean? Dan? Everyone else? We have another
Yes, I'll work, I'll work with Dan to address the edits that were talked about from the board members and we'll follow up shortly.
Excellent. Very good.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Dan. And, and Sean, you want to talk about transportation policy? Eighty-four hundred.
Yes, my apologies. This policy eighty-four hundred, as folks may able to see, was last revised in 2003. It was originally adopted in 1968. Thanks to Bob Van Keren and Elizabeth. And my apologies, I am blanking on Elizabeth's last name. My sincere apologies. Our director of transportation, we've gone through the policy with the policy committee on two different occasions to try to clarify some language about our current practices as things may have shifted. As well as to be mindful that we need to be thinking about our transportation, particularly what we've learned via COVID. And also recognizing that despite our best efforts, there are continued And also recognizing that despite our best efforts, there are, continue to be aspects of our transportation policy that are not equitable. And so we're trying to work on that. Elizabeth Burner, thank you very much, Elizabeth Burner. So we, what you have here is a first draft. We've tried to go through, similar to what Moira was talking about, in terms of commas and semicolons and things of that nature. I'm sure there'll be some additional move, changes. We are also following New York State Department of Education guidelines in terms of distance and transportation. These are not guidelines decided arbitrarily by the City School District. This is in keeping with the guidelines of New York State Department of Education as well. The one item we did add, there are a couple items we did add, but one is trying to limit student time on buses, knowing that that's a problem for a number of students. And again, given some of the routes that we have, we may not be able to do much about it this year with all the complications and so for distancing. But that's about where we find ourselves. Pat and Moira, things that you would add?
I can't think of anything.
I think that was a very comprehensive summary.
Yeah. And Liz's contributions were especially helpful.
There was a fair amount of language that was eliminated from.
Yeah.
If I'm, and Sean, it was helpful.
It was much cleaner, particularly after Liz worked on it.
Right. And Sean, it was certainly helpful to have the old policy and then have the marked up policy to know what, what was eliminated, changed, et cetera, and edited. So that's always helpful. I don't go to every policy work session, but, so. But Sean, the, the time on the bus numeric was not provided for that, you know, a max time that, right?
No, we, we know that we couldn't do that for a number of reasons. One of which, again, we wouldn't be able to hold true to that. And Rob, to your point, language that was deleted, we have realized in writing policies, unless necessary, we try to make them as less wordy if we can, right? Because then it means that we have more to try to be in compliance with. We just want to make sure that we're in compliance with good practices in New York State Department of Education. And lastly, I'll say, Rob, as someone who doesn't go to many of the policy committees, you seem to be at all, so we appreciate your presence.
So Sean, we're, we're just for a first reading. There can be more questions in a moment, but do you want to go ahead and move it? And we'll consider a vote.
I move policy eighty-four hundred, transportation policy for a first reading.
Second?
Second by Pat. Pat, Moira, and everybody, any, anything else? A bit of a pause. If not, we'll have another opportunity to take a look at it next time. So Tricia, please, go ahead.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFabe? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Waslow?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. And so really on to the last item of the evening, and we'll let everybody go. Unless there's anything else that we need to review and discuss. But by, by New York state law, we have to, as a board, as a district, have a reorganization meeting. The first, Dr. Brown, ten days of July? Is it ten days, eight days?
Ten days.
Yes, sir. Okay, one of those. So we need to set that date, time, place, and at this time, so we can let the public know, so we can let Tricia know and others that are actively involved in putting together a fairly thick piece of work that encompasses all that appointments, items that we need to review in our reorg meeting, so. So Dr. Brown, did, did we have a date in mind? Did, Sean, do you have a date in mind or others?
We were thinking if I may, the week after the Fourth of July, we were looking at potentially July the sixth, Tuesday, or July the seventh, Wednesday. But July the sixth, a regular Tuesday, which we're accustomed to Tuesday meetings, it's something that we do.
Right, Monday is the official, you know, and, well, that's a three day weekend, so Monday's not a good day. July fifth, but it's a day to enjoy the long weekend. And Tuesday is July sixth, a pretty normal meeting day for us, if not week.
So we, oh, okay. So on our regular schedule, that would be a committee meeting day. But instead, we just have the, right, we'd have the reorg meeting.
Right. And as of the end of June, there are no more work session dates until they're reconstituted again, right? So, so typically, we have that reorg meeting beginning of, beginning of July. And we do, we do keep, now that fourth Tuesday in July open in case there are HR appointments, any business that needs, needs a quorum. It's tough to go through all of July without a, you know, a voting meeting on other business besides reorg business. So, but again, there's giving everybody a break between July sixth and the end of the month.
One of the questions is, do we list to do it in the morning, like we traditionally done, or afternoon?
I, I know sometimes that day after the fourth is tough to have anything that morning. On the road or something, I might not even be back, but I try. If we're gonna hold true to our Tuesday thing, doing it in the evening would work better. I'd have a whole day to get my act together.
I would agree.
Wash the seaweed from the lake off.
Right, I have no problem with that, but that's just me.
I'm fine. Evening or morning? Tuesday morning could be a work conflict with me, so I would prefer Tuesday afternoon or evening or Wednesday morning, which is usually clear.
I would think Tuesday evening would be better. Sean, folks, folks at home? Chris, your schedule, not sure how that would work?
I, I go to work and come home when the work is done, so. No, evening would probably be better.
So eleven o'clock on Tuesday, you'd be maybe home by then.
I would be asleep by then.
So can we, go ahead.
Before we agree, I am definitely on the road. At Monday, the fifth, best case scenario, I arrive home on late that evening, closer to midnight. So Tuesday in the evening would work, but I would also be supportive of Wednesday morning. I realize that creates conflict for other folks. We have, for the past number of years, had our reorganization meeting in the morning. And it, but I realize that may not be equitable or fair either, so I just wanna, and, and this tends to be not a short meeting, if we all recall, right? You know, two and a half, three hours at the, at the least, given all the expectations and committees that we have to create and things that we have to discuss and set up and organize. And so ju- just a reminder.
So you proposing a different date, say midday?
I want to make sure that folks can participate. My preference would be for Wednesday morning. And to, to be done with and get it done and over with, and then you have the whole day. Tuesday evening, you know, for me disrupts it, but it's just me being selfish. I want to be honest about that.
Wednesday works great for me.
It would have to be morning, morning for me because of childcare stuff, as in not having any.
Aaron, when you say morning, morning, what does that mean? Like six AM, five AM?
Well, I'm already two hours into my day then, so sure. Um, no, I mean, like nine, nine or ten. Because I need to be down by eleven thirty to handle things.
How does Wednesday work?
Wednesday's fine by me. Perfect.
Pat, does Wednesday work?
Wednesday works anytime. I mean, not too, too early, but.
Well, well, giddy up. Wednesday works for Pat, so. Eldred, is Wednesday work?
As early as possible. Yep, we can do six thirty in the morning.
No, no.
I like six thirty, let's do that.
You morning people.
How about, can we say nine AM? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
And we'll try to be efficient with what we have to do.
Yes.
And Sean, two hours should handle it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a lot of talking and voting for three hours, so. But, but a Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday would certainly work. Dr. Brown?
Nine.
Nine, and that gives, does that meant much more time after the Fourth of July, a weekend for Tricia to have everything that she needs to have, right? And we do, we do remember and appreciate all that Tricia does throughout the year, especially when, on that day when we vote, when the community votes and the reorg meeting. Those are two, two big initiatives for the board clerk, so. So good. Wednesday, July seventh?
Yep.
At nine AM. And where?
In this, Daphne, as she's, she's been here all night. One time I want to ask her a question.
Are we?
Let's tentatively plan for this room or the Board of Education conference room, but we'll try to get it.
Are we in person?
We will be, yes, sir.
I need, I need to, I need to be virtual. My son's doctors have asked that I limit my contact still.
So, hybrid?
Well, right, so hybrid, we just need capability to have everybody there that can't be in person.
Yes, we will confirm it. I don't think we have some programming happening in this space at that time. So let's plan for this space in a similar, if not the same setup we have right now.
Yeah, and yeah, we just need a date, time, and place. And so we have all three. And so it sounds like a plan. We good? Everyone, I think that's good for everyone, and we don't have to have a another meet, we can have a free Tuesday, which is nice every now and then. So that's, so that'll work. So thanks, everyone, for working through that. And Dr. Brown, other discussion items?
No, if I may, Miss Dainesley, just a quick special shout out to Miss Emily Casey Armey. This is, she's done an outstanding job with these Board of Education meetings, supporting Tricia, our board clerk, with these virtual meetings, which have not been easy. And also a welcome to Casey Banks, who will be coming on and joining us as we do this this summer and early fall. Thank you, Emily.
Well, we look, well, we look forward to Casey stepping in and Emily doing all those great things Emily's gonna do in a little while, so. So, so it sounds good. So we're, we're all set, right? We can, we're free to move about the country now, right? So thanks, we are adjourned, and thanks, everyone. And I gotta go home and let Jeth run.